Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh one P M. I would like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Father, we just give you glory and we give you honor and we give you praise. And we just say thank you, Lord, for keeping us and our families safe another day. And we just thank you for your saving grace. And Father God, we know that you are sovereign God and that there's none like you and there's nothing that we can do without you. But Father, we invite you into this meeting tonight and we ask that you would equip us with your wisdom and your peace and unity. And that we will be productive in this meeting. And Father, we ask, oh, God, that you will bless the citizens and the employees of the city of Glanard and all who's affiliated with us. And we extend our special prayers and condolences to those that have experienced uh the airplane crashes and even the deaths and their families, Father God, even the the fires and the uh these severe storms. We ask that you would be with those with the families and that they will experience recovery in Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillian?
Here.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Here.
Councilwoman Harry?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here. All right, we have a call. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'll pass the president.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to remove um R thirty six two zero five twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, I'd like to add some topics of discussion. Uh, we can just label odds and ends. I just want some follow up on some issues, um, because it's like four or five questions, so just odds and ends. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, but I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to add a topic of discussion to um discuss the council, the city potentially hosting a candidate forum for the District Five representatives. So we can, the city can hear from from them.
All right. Any other discussion? Uh, any opposition to uh accepting the amended agenda? Hearing none by unanimous consent, uh, the agenda is hereby adopted, the amended agenda is hereby adopted. Uh, first up are the meeting minutes from the work session on January sixth, the uh public hearing on January fourteenth and the regular session on January twenty first. Uh, it's included for the reading uh by council members. If you have any questions, um, you know, you can ask questions now or um uh at the public hearing or even at the regular hearing before we vote on them. Um, next is I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones, was that a new hand or? Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand down. Please forgive me.
Oh, no worries. All right, next up, uh, is pending legislation or legislation being introduced or reintroduced? Uh, first up is ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty five in ordinance to increase the stipend of the City Council of Glanard in Maryland. Uh, I'm responsible for this. Um, are there any questions as relates to this uh ordinance?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Harry?
So your rationale is because we're not attracting people to these positions that you want to take the price up? So basically, we want to get people that was interested in the money versus people interested in interested in the city?
No, not at all. Um, I think it's um uh, it there there's one incentive there, but for the most part, um, it the cost of living has increased. Um, things have significantly increased, whether the cost of living or a price of goods and things like that. And all the price of just um having a babysitter come and watch your children while you go to a council meeting. Uh, so everything has increased since twenty, I believe, twenty twenty, uh, but the stipend hasn't increased. Uh, now, mind you, twelve thousand dollars a year, which will be a thousand dollars a month, is nowhere near compensation for all the work that uh council members do. Uh, but it is a stipend that can help with the uh costs to be able to assist council members to do all that they need to do, uh, while not being burdened by um and not being completely burdened by uh things like childcare and how we're going to get things together so that council members can, I don't know, like I've gone to Annapolis several times, you know, I've had things happen with both of my kids. I have to balance different things, uh, and it costs a lot of money to do that. Uh, now, the city doesn't pay all that cost, but I I don't think that twelve thousand dollars for a year uh is um it's not enough, but I wouldn't ask for more.
Um, I mean, I I just think that, I mean, that's that's a lot. I just think that, you know, the part of doing this job is really to give back to the community. It's really just a stipend. It's not there to, you know, fund your income or uh fund your living standard or whatever else um you need to fund. It's really just to try to give you back some of the money that you may use throughout the year. Um, we're part time at that and we spending over well, three hundred thousand dollars for department heads, four hundred thousand dollars on department he is supposed to be experiencing what they do. So we don't have to do all of this. I mean, some of the stuff we do, I don't feel I should have to do. I don't feel you have to have to do. Um, that's what we pay these department heads for. I mean, I think if we're going to do anything that since we're going to eliminate the mayor's position um in the next uh uh term and we go into a new form of government, that we take her her uh salary and split it up between the seven and just add another twelve hundred dollars, taking everybody up to eighty four hundred. I think that'd be much more amenable, especially since we don't know really what's going to happen with this three point five billion dollar deficit. I don't think I've ever experienced the the state actually cutting, because we haven't had that yet. I've been in here long enough to see when the state cuts, they cut all the way down to the municipal governments and sometimes it hurts hard and you got to make some drastic decisions on how you're going to balance your budget, especially beginning state funding. So I I just think, I mean, I understand you may want to take it up, but I think twelve thousand dollars is is excessive. I think taking the mayor's budget, I mean, the mayor's salary at this eighty four, dividing it up seven ways and taking everybody up to eighty four hundred, giving each one twelve hundred and taking it up to eighty four hundred to be more, I think it's more um I think it's more fair. I honestly believe I think we shouldn't try to, you know, live off the citizens backs, you know, it's their tax dollars. You know, I mean, part of the part of the part of this is giving back to the community and it shouldn't be no looking at a financial gain, you know. Um, we all got to make sacrifices when we take these positions and that's part of the job. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harry. Uh, completely respect your opinion and uh, you know, welcome other council members' opinions too. Um, I I just want to really point out that it's the the uh foundation of this is not to live off the backs of of citizens' tax dollars. Really is to be able to include all who want to uh volunteer their time to serve the city of of Glanard. Uh, so, you know, my situation might be something different from another person's situation where I have two kids and, you know, um, where I am serving and we have what at the minimum three uh meetings a month. But we all know that we have done way more, uh, whether we have to hear a personnel thing, go on a close session or we're participating in other things. So, I mean, the cost for childcare for average family years well over twenty thousand dollars. Um, so, um, I just want to make it a point that this is not to supplement income uh because it's it still would, it would not effectively um support anyone to live off for the the, you know, for a year. Uh, but certainly I I went up to twelve thousand, you're saying eighty four hundred is, yeah. You know, I respect your opinion. If if any other council members want to lower it, that's, I go by the will of the council, but I I think that twelve thousand dollars is um still appropriate, from my opinion. Uh, any other comments from council members? Uh, Councilwoman Gillian?
Um, thank you, Council President. I don't have too too much to comment on. I just want to just state that given what's happening on the White House federal government side, that that's where I I do think that the amount should be increased, but I'm not sure um about how much, but I just want to flag why I'm saying that. It's because of the current political climate as far as funding all around.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, I, any other comments? Question?
Sorry, Council President, I have a question. Do we have any com- comparison points? Like, do we know what uh council members in comparable cities are earning?
Uh, I do not have that on hand. No, I do not.
Okay. Maybe we can try and get some of that information to to come up with a reasonable amount. It sounds like most of us are saying um there should be an increase, but the amount of the increase is what's under question. I just did a quick search and it looks like Bowie, which is not really comparable to the city of Glanard, but they're making seventeen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
As of twenty twenty two, um seventeen thousand twenty seven dollars. Um, it says the average salary for council members across Maryland ranges from approximately twenty nine thousand seven thirty four to thirty two thousand five forty seven, but that might, that's probably includes those who are full time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, are there any other questions or comments? I mean, I can pull something together so council members can have it, um, but you know, a search will render pretty much what Councilwoman Fareed stated. But if we want to try to find something that's comparable to the city of Glanard, uh, we could also detail that too, so council members can have it. Hearing none of the questions, uh, we'll move forward, um, and I'll try to get that to council members so they can have something um for weeks out. And then we can, you know, discuss it more and and vote on it in a regular session. And of course, citizens can comment on it on at the public here. All right, next up is uh, ordinance zero seven twenty twenty five and emergency ordinance to amend the twenty twenty five budget for purpose of reallocation of expenses in the budget. This was to address the um the need to add certain items, but I believe if you guys recall last week, uh, we needed additional funding for for the elevator, which I think according to Mr. Simpson, we're going to hold off on as we, you know, explore other areas. Uh, Mr. Simpson, is that correct? Just want to make sure I have that right.
Uh, good evening, Council President. Uh, just for the details, some more research.
Yes, more research, thank you. Um, and the other was for potentially um uh increasing the retirement uh to a total of seven and a half percent um contribution. So are there any questions related to this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, one second, I'll go with Councilwoman Jones, because I saw her hand first and I'll come back to you. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I also thought that the budget um reallocation was also going to include the uh council chambers and to show the money for the council chambers and the nutrition center and also, I thought, the goal room. Or were we just doing this for to show the money toward the retirement benefits?
Um, we can add it. Uh, this was, since we held off on the on the um the elevator, we was going with the retirement, uh, but we could certainly ask for a completely revised budget, uh, that can show uh the surpluses in every category, but Mr. Stewart? Is Mr. Stewart on?
Yes, I'm on.
Um, could you also add what it would look like for the um nutrition center and the council chambers?
Um, yes, we could, but I'm waiting for more information as it relates to the cost. And um with that, I'll be able to put some numbers together to give you a comprehensive ordinance on um what it costs and what we could save. Yes.
I'm good with that, Council President. They're uh waiting for some, doing some more research concerning those matters.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I guess I have a problem with this piece of legislation because it's not clear and concise based on the way we normally do our budget reallocations. We really need to see the app, see what it looks like in a budgeted form and what the bottom line is going to be for each department that you're um taking money from. Also, I'm not understanding, so basically it looks like you're taking surplus money from salary savings to pay for a retirement for this year, but what do you do when the when the positions are off field next year? So this is really just a a a quick way to to fund it for this year. That's all I see. Um, you're taking surplus from regular employee surplus and social security to cover the uh uh amount for the um for this retirement fund. And it's not clear. The citizens should be able to know exactly what the bottom line is going to be once you run it through the budget. They should be able to see, we should be able to see the total amount of how these how these are going to affect that department, how it's going to affect that line item and um everything. It should be clear and concise. This isn't clear and concise. You're just listing a bunch of numbers and we don't know what what it's going to look like or how it's going to basically affect the budget, even though even though you're moving from one place to the other. It's still going to affect the budget and budget line items in some other places. So I think we need to look at that because again, um, you may be taking some money from salaries and some salaries maybe may already be over budget or something. We don't know. But we can't tell layout like this. Um, also, again, I'm I'm just, I'm not in favor of, again, increasing with those two forms, I mean, increasing the um I mean, using, you mean, uh, getting they know those two forms of retirement accounts. Those are not, they're not going to benefit the citizens in this community paying out that kind of money and I, in my research, um, you know, there's other things I got issues with, so. Yeah, I just think we need, this needs to be more clear and concise. I just, I can't, you know, we need to know, it needs to be dropped into the budget so we can see what's going on and we can actually see what numbers we actually pulling from.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. Uh, Mr. Stewart, I know we asked for a revised budget. What's the timeline to receive that?
Um, we're looking at until after the fifteenth.
After the fifteen?
Yes.
To get a revised budget? Yeah, so we we likely going to need a revised budget way before then.
Mm-hmm.
So can that be moved up? Mr. Stewart, can that be moved up so that council members can have a more time instead of us getting it on the night of, you know?
Okay, um, let me work on it to see if I could get it by the tenth or the eleventh. Which is next week, Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Harry, are you done? Are you, sorry, are you done?
Yeah, good, yeah.
Just came off kind of sharp. My apologies. Um, all right, we'll move on then. Next is disappeared. Sorry, one second. Kind of got lost around here. All right, back up. R thirty six is what we're moving, so next is, we already discussed this, is R thirty four dash twenty twenty five, but that's just back on here from last work session. So we'll move on.
Uh, Ms. I do have a question about that.
Sure.
Yeah, so I want to ask a question, and this is to, I guess, the city manager and uh Ms. Schultz. Um, did, uh, is Mutual of America the only the only um company that you looked at for this retirement program? Because I'm not understanding how we're going to go to Mutual of America. They're going to sit there and give us two plans that they're going to manage, so they're going to get double the money from us. And they're going to want us to carry this this uh plan. Also, when I look researched the four fifty seven B plan, it says that it's normally an employee investment plan only and employer matching is very uncommon. So I'm not sure why we even using this plan. And see, that's what I'm saying. That's why we got to look at other organi- other um opportunities, like Vanguard has a forward retirement program and Fidelity have very good retirement programs. Have y'all looked into those two programs to see if they got a service that will benefit the city, where we can roll everything into one? Because I still think that Mutual of America's on a nickel and dime, have us maintaining two accounts. I've never seen an organization maintain two accounts. And I, and that's for that seven percent, when I researched that, the average amount for most matching accounts, most matching uh amounts for investment uh retirement accounts is anywhere from four to five percent. Ten percent if you are Fortune five hundred and a big moneymaker. They'll make you ten percent, but most of them is four to five percent. We're giving them seven percent. But have y'all looked at Vanguard or Fidelity in relation to, in relationship to us finding a retirement vehicle?
Uh, I, I'm sorry, my 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 um video won't come up. Good evening. I was instructed a couple of years ago to look at Mutual of America and compare it to the state of Maryland. That's the only two that I have looked at and then it was passed over to um, you know, Mr. Simpson. I mean, Mr. Stewart and I looked at Mutual of America, but I personally have only looked at Mutual of America and uh State of Maryland, which is what I was instructed to do.
Okay, because I mean, did I have, I know, because I, I'm I'm surprised. I know I talked to um the previous city manager and previous city managers and about that and told them, you know, they need to look at, when we were looking at it before, I know we were looking at the state, but I said also look at, you know, some other options like Fidelity or Vanguard. See, that's why I don't understand why we continue to look at one source only and try and move forward with that one source.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, unfortunately, so that information didn't filter down to me. Um, um, and that's the only two that even with the previous, the two previous city managers that I've discussed with them and it was never shared to to look any further. So I I I apologize.
No, it isn't your fault. I'm just saying that that we have to be more prudent with the city's tax, with the citizens' tax money. We can already sit here and throw this program out here, maintain two investment accounts under one one company when we probably could roll them all into a Vanguard or a a what you call account and get some advice from them on what our options are when it comes down to a flap account and four fifty seven B. I just think that we are so busy and we're constantly doing this one on one option thing that we're we're going to miss out on some great opportunities when it comes down to the citizens. Uh, I mean, it comes down to the um employees' retirement. I want employees to have a better retirement program, but I'm also not going to sit there and break the bank when it comes down to the citizens and what they need. Again, I'm telling you right now, all this money is going to be gone. And you're sitting here looking at these dollar signs now in this bank account, but it's all going to be gone when all the spending is done. We have some major projects that need to be done and looking at roads, we're going to have some major issues with roads. I can see that happening now. And again, with the state of Maryland having a three point five billion dollar deficit, that rolls downhill. That deficit rolls downhill. We don't get, we're not going to get as much as we used to get. There's not going to be any options out there for us.
That's true.
And that, and who, and the person that loses out is the citizens. So why I want a better retirement program, I'm not ready to give them a lucrative one that's way above what most normal people get. And I think that we need to look at other options. We need to look at other companies and stop going with this one company only thing. Because they're going to tell you what they're going to, they're going to tell you what they're going to tell you to keep you there and um uh and make money off of you. I'm just, I'm I'm, I mean, I think we 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 should be looking at at least three planes with everything we doing, you know, these contracts that, I mean, we signed some lucrative contracts and we're only doing, we're we're doing one on, you know, that's it. Just one contract and that's it, one and done. And that's not, that's not healthy for the citizens, for our financial uh statements, and it's not healthy for the citizens when it comes down to them to providing them services. So I just think we need to look at more more options than just this.
Okay, I'll, excuse me, I'll work with Dean um and and look at Vanguard and Fidelity for sure and see if anything else. And between the two of us, we can um find out what what their plans look like.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on uh to R thirty seven twenty twenty five resolution safeguarding immigrant communities. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, so this resolution was drafted in response to the executive orders that were um issued by the current president of the United States and considering the fact that we have a large immigrant population in the city of Glanard and in a growing one, making sure that they feel safe and know that we are protecting them and defending their rights.
Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilwoman I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'll pull it up so you can see it.
Uh, I just wanted to ask Councilwoman Fareed, Councilwoman Fareed, was this given a legal sufficiency by the attorneys? And also, um, in reading this and then reading the uh new directive that was sent out, the first directive after uh the President of the United States issued his his uh okay, we'll just relieve that. Um, but after it was issued, then something came out from the state's attorney from the state of Maryland, Anthony Brown. And now something new has come out. So uh have we looked at um what the state of Maryland, the state's attorney is uh making sure that this is in line with what he wants us to do?
So we can certainly do that. I did this in line, I I forgot to mention this part. I did this in line with what the county has already done. Um, I attended a um session with Congressman Ivy and Councilwoman Ivy and others um talking and about knowing our rights and what municipalities um what they were urging municipalities to to do. Um, so in drafting this, it was based upon what is already on the books for the county. And um in terms of legal sufficiency, I wanted us to go through this, see if we had any questions, what particular areas we had questions on and then submit a more directed um inquiry to Mr. Kapinski rather than just sort of asking his opinion on it. Um about that answer your question.
Okay, and um so uh our, hmm, is Chief Brian on here?
Yes.
Has he, Chief Brian, have you, have you looked at this? Does this line up with the general orders, which we need to take a look at? Um, and the um And the, um, guidelines of what the city of Glen Arden is going to, uh, doing and got, in, in cahoots, not cahoots, in conjunction to what the Prince George's County has already set up, in conjunction to what the state has already set up from your, um, law enforcement perspective?
Yes, good evening, everyone, um, yes, thank you, um, yes, in reviewing this, um, I saw that it had similarities. Um, we were given a guidance memorandum, um, for local law enforcement and federal immigration, uh, guidance, um, to follow in reference to it, and it has some similarities here in this resolution, but my officer's already been instructed on how, how to handle these type of situations, um, so we're following the guidance memorandum, and some look like most of it is in compliance with what we have, so.
Alright, that's a good sign, thank you so much, thank you, Councilwoman Fareed.
Uh, Vice President. I'll come back to you, Vice President Ferguson.
Um, I just, um, wanted to add that I, um, wanted to co-sponsor, I spoke to Councilwoman Fareed.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please add Vice President Ferguson as a co-sponsor? Councilman Mary.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, really what is the purpose of this piece of legislation, I mean, I, I read what it's saying. But this is really giving people a false sense of security, because we cannot technically legally do actually anything to protect illegal immigrants that are in this country. Um, my, my niece is a school teacher, they just ran up in her school and took out a bunch of kindergartners. You know, so I'm just saying, you know, I, 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 I think what this piece of legislation do, no disrespect to, you know, Councilwoman Fareed or anything, I know you're trying to do something to protect the immigration population. But I think when you bring something like this to the floor, it puts a spotlight on them that we have a large immigration population in our community. And when you got a demagogue sitting in the White House that got control of the House, the Senate, and the Supreme Court. You never know what they're gonna do, they may run up in here now, they were just in Belkville a while back. So I'm just thinking that, you know, I'm, and, and also, we do take a note that we will uphold the Constitution and the laws thereof of the United States of America, so if we're sitting here saying we're gonna violate laws that are on the books, that's in violation of the oath that we took as council members. So, I mean, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I honestly believe that this is gonna put a target on some people's backs in this community when they see it, because again, they'd, they'd get around and, and people would see it, and I'm telling you, I, this, this, this administration is serious about what they mean to do, and I think anytime they find it, they can find an example to make of, of, of immigration situation, they will, and I think that this piece of legislation really is gonna put a, a, a target on some of our, our people in our community's back, you know, um. That's just, that's just my feeling, I just, I'm, I'm just, I really don't understand how we can sit there and tell them we're gonna protect them when we really can't. There's really absolutely nothing that we can do, passing a piece of legislation that's, that the county can't even protect them. You know, they could say what they're not gonna do, but if they got, if they got a, 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 a order from a judge saying, collect them, they're gonna collect them. You know, and, and they're making it easier and easier to do, so I just don't want, I don't want people to think, and this legislation's gonna pass, and you, you safe and you free and you clear, cuz you're not. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Council President, I just, I just wanna address the part about the law, um, executive orders are not laws. Um, they do not trump statutory law, uh, they are just ways for the administration to execute, um, existing laws, and there are challenges to them right now from a legal perspective. Um, also, everyone is entitled to due process, and as you can see, it's actually shown on the screen in line fifty-nine and sixty. Um, we're not saying that we will not follow due process, so if there's a warrant that is signed by a judge, then that's due process. And it will be executed, what we're saying is that we will not, not follow the law. Which is to change people otherwise, um, without, or allowing people to do searches without warrants.
Ms. President, may I?
Yes.
Let me just say this, as soon as you cross over the border from another country into the United States, that is a misdemeanor, clear violation of the law. And as such, it should be, it, it'll be handled that way. You know, um, that's one reason, that's a problem I have, you know, is that when you cross over that border, it's a misdemeanor. Why, I'm sitting here, I, along with Councilman Harrison, I don't expect affairs to get people, get misdemeanors off of their records, so they, they can get a job and get everything else, so. It is a violation of the law to come here and be an illegal immigrant. I mean, it's, 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 that's US law, that's US code, once you cross over the border, that's a, that's a misdemeanor, so it is a law, and it isn't an executive order, that's the law. So, I mean, I'm just saying, we, we, we want to uphold these laws, so, I mean, I'm just saying, how can we vote on something and say, we're gonna not uphold the law? But, in this situation, you know, I mean, I, I mean, me personally, and like I said, I, I just feel that, um, you know, it should be fair across the board, if I run a red light and get, and get a, get a, and hit a, hit, hit somebody's car and get hit, get hit with a misdemeanor for speeding or whatever it is, then everybody else should have that same opportunity, I mean, should, should get the same penalty. You know, so, and I would have to uphold the law for that person, I'm not gonna say that person is innocent, because I know you, because you had to get home and go to lunch, or you had to get home to an emergency, you know, and it's, it's, the law's the law, so, I'm just saying, when you cross the border, that is a violation of the law, it's, it's a misdemeanor on the books. It should be a misdemeanor on the books, it's not, but it's, it is legally, it's a misdemeanor, so. Alright, thank you.
Council President, I, I just wanna make clear that not every person who is an immigrant is undocumented. Um, and that is the, one of the concerns. Um, we should not be making that assumption that just because someone has immigrated to this country, that they are here because they illegally crossed the border. Um, there are many different statuses of people who are immigrants, even, including those who are on a pathway to citizenship. Um, so there is a, a great difference, and I think that is the thing that we are trying to combat, the, the idea that just because someone is an immigrant, they are here illegally and subject to be deported, that is not true.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, Vice President Ferguson.
Yes, um, I originally was going to, um, uh, put the subject, um, as a, a topic of discussion, because, um, I've had three, um, families, um, that I know actually contacted me and was fearful, um, about their children that go to Savannah Woods, actually, when I spoke to Ms. Fareed, uh, Councilwoman Fareed, it was three, but somebody contacted me today, um. So while, you know, maybe, I, I mean, I do think that this should go to, um, you know, to our attorney, um, and maybe could be scaled back, I don't know, but, um, they're asking like, you know, what can we do, you know, I don't, now, one person does have a undocumented, um, person, but the other ones, they are, they have paperwork and everything, but they still feel like, um, you know, they don't wanna get a call from Savannah Woods and saying that, you know, it was a sweep and their babies are gone, and, and, and so I don't know what to tell them, so I was gonna do a topical discussion anyway, so maybe, um, that's why I am really, um, at this point, um, like I said, it was three, now it's four people that are, um, uh, you know, that are worried about that, because everybody that has been scooped up, you know, were not illegal. So, um, at any rate, um, if we don't do this, as a topic of discussion, what can we do, or how can we, what, I mean, we just tell the citizens, there's nothing we can do? I mean, I don't, I don't know, because I don't, if they come to me, all I could tell them was that, I, I don't know, I'll bring it up a topic of discussion, but that was before I saw this resolution, so. Again, um, that's why I'm gonna co-sponsor, because something needs to be said or done, and, um, if not, you know, uh, have a plan to what we're gonna do, um, and Chief said that they have already been instructed, so either way, it's still, um, some kind of plan, so, um, that's why I wanted to co-sponsor, because I've had people already come in and ask me about it. And so, um, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson, um, eh, since we're talking about the, um, you know, enforcement, Chief, uh, see, you raise your hand, did you wanna comment on that particular piece? Oh, let's see, put his hand down, okay.
I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, real quick, yeah, ju- ju- um, just trying to be clear with, um, Councilman Fareed's, um, purpose for this resolution, because, um, as it applies to the police department, like Councilman Herring said earlier, um, we got guidelines to follow, and so I see some of the stuff in their mirrors, what we will be doing, but at the end of the day, um, when the federal government come in, if ICE comes in and, um, decide to do what they're gonna do with paperwork that's signed by the judge, um, there's nothing the police department at our level can do about it anyway, so. We got our guidelines, and pretty much our guidelines state that when, whenever ICE, um, um, encounters the school or any area like of such, especially my schools, are, we are, been in contact with the schools, um, they contact my SRO, the principal will contact SRO, they contact me, and basically, what we'd be doing, observing, make sure they have the paper, the right paperwork and so forth, and, um, we follow the Tenth Amendment and so forth, but it's not, like, um, like Councilman Herring said, it's not too much we can do, we're just there, um, I'm not, and pretty much all the agencies, um, won't be participating, and they won't be directing us to do anything, but we, we pretty much there to observe to make sure that they have the right paperwork, and they take it from there, so it's, so as far as, um, this res- this resolution out, this legislation out, um, I, I don't really see how we can protect as a council, as a city, um, against the federal government. Um, only thing we can do is the police department is make sure, um, we follow the amendments and the guidelines that we've been given, so it won't be a liability to us as individual police officers in violation of federal law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, could I just request that we go through this, uh, resolution, because nothing that the chief has said is um, contradicted in this resolution.
Alright, alright, one second, we will, let me get to Councilwoman Jones, and then we can go from top to bottom with the resolution, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President, I was surprised to hear, I think that was Councilman Herring that said they went to, uh, uh, elementary school to a kindergarten, rounded up kindergarteners? Why would you round up kindergarteners, I don't understand, I would be interested to know what the name of that school is to, um, uh, find out the particulars on that event, you know, if, uh, that took place. And also, uh, I went to PGC, well, not went, I was online with PGCA meeting, and that was one of the topics of discussion that they had. And Mayor Benitez, I think she's with Cottage City, and then the other mayor in, uh, Hyattsville, I think, because they have such a large contingent of, uh, immigrant, uh, residents. What they were doing was putting together plans in case a parent got picked up by ICE and the children were in school. And to make sure that somebody would pick up the children, you know, that they had a context, so that children could be picked up from the schools, cuz I, I never once heard them say that ICE would pick up, uh, el- I mean, elementary, I, I don't, I don't see them, I mean, elementary school children, uh, having any kind of, uh, issues with ICE, o- other than their parents, you know, uh, may have the issue, but, uh, maybe we could get together with, uh, Mayor Benitez and the mayor in, um, uh, Hyattsville, and talk to them about what it, cuz I didn't get all of the information that they were presenting, but they, they're coming up with a strategy from CASA and from within themselves of how they're gonna handle what happens to the children if parents do get picked up, so that they won't be left at the schools, and then, uh, child protective comes in, and then they're lost in the system somewhere. So that was one of the things that they were, what they were trying to do. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, alright, at the request, uh, Councilwoman Fareed will take it from the top, and I'll just follow your guidance, uh, Councilwoman Fareed, as we go through it. Fair?
Yeah, shall we read it? I'm happy to read it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, a resolution affirming the city of Glen Arden's commitment to safeguarding immigrant communities, rejecting xenophobic policies, and ensuring public safety for all residents. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is a diverse and inclusive community that values the contributions of all residents, including immigrants, and is committed to ensuring their safety and well-being, and whereas Maryland state law does not require local jurisdictions to enforce federal immigration laws. And the Maryland Trust Act of twenty-twenty-one prohibits law enforcement agencies from inquiring about an individual's immigration status. Detaining individuals solely for federal immigration enforcement purposes are using public resources to assist federal immigration enforcement agencies in non-criminal immigration matters, and whereas Prince George's County has established policies that limit cooperation with US Immigration and Customs Enforcement, including prohibiting county law enforcement from honoring ICE detainee requests without a judicial warrant, recognizing that local, I can't, I can't scroll it, you have to scroll it. Recognizing that local enforcement of federal immigration laws erodes trust between immigrant communities and law enforcement, making communities less safe, and whereas public safety in the city of Glen Arden depends on fostering trust between residents and local law enforcement, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of immigration status, feel safe reporting crimes, seeking emergency assistance, and engaging with local government services, and whereas sensitive locations, including but not limited to churches, schools, healthcare facilities, public parks, libraries, and community centers, should be places where all residents can access resources and services without fear of immigration enforcement actions, and whereas the city of Glen Arden recognizes that the role of local law enforcement is to uphold local and state laws, maintain public safety, and build positive relationships with residents, and not to enforce federal immigration laws, and whereas the city of Glen Arden stands firmly against xenophobic policies that discriminate against individuals based on national origin, ethnicity, or immigration status, and will not be complicit in any actions that marginalize or target immigrant communities, and whereas the city of Glen Arden seeks to reaffirm its commitment to protecting the rights and dignity of all residents by ensuring that its local resources, including its police department, are not used to carry out federal immigration enforcement activities without due process. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Glen Arden that, one, commitment to public safety for all residents. The city of Glen Arden is committed to fostering a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community where all individuals, regardless of immigration status, can live without fear of discrimination, intimidation, or xenophobic policies. Two, rejection of xenophobic policies. A, the city of Glen Arden affirms its opposition to any federal, state, or local policies that discriminate against individuals based on national origin, ethnicity, or immigration status. B, the city will not adopt, enforce, or comply with any measures that contribute to racial profiling, discriminatory enforcement, or unjust detainment of immigrant residents. Three, limitation on cooperation with ICE. The Glen Arden Police Department shall not inquire about an individual's immigration status except as required by law or in cases where it is directly relevant to a criminal investigation. B, the Glen Arden Police Department shall not honor ICE detainee requests or administrative warrants that are not signed by a federal judge. C, no city employee or department shall use public resources, including personnel, funds, or equipment to assist ICE in the enforcement of federal immigration laws unless required by law. Four, designation of sensitive areas, the city of Glen Arden affirms that schools, places of worship, healthcare facilities, public parks, libraries, and other city-operated facilities are sensitive areas where all residents should feel safe from federal immigration enforcement actions. Five, nondiscriminatory city services, no city agency shall deny services or benefits based on an individual's immigration status, ensuring equitable access to city resources and protections. Six, commitment to trust and inclusion. The city of Glen Arden will continue to engage with community organizations, legal advocates, and residents to ensure that its policies reflect its commitment to protecting immigrant communities and upholding civil rights. And, uh, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be transmitted to the governor, the county executive, Maryland General Assembly, et cetera. So I wanted to read that out loud, because I don't want this resolution to be distilled down to whether or not we cooperate with ICE. It is broader than that, it is affirming our commitment to the people of the city of Glen Arden, regardless of their status, that we will not deny them access to resources. And we will not be complicit in unlawful methods of, um, detaining those individuals. And we will not be complicit in unlawful methods of um detaining those individuals or um denying them due process, which again is already a part of the law for the state, the county. And now this is the city's commitment to that same um way of thinking. And again, that we will not use our resources to further the actions of a federal investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I just have another suggestion for the council. Um, maybe we should have a um presentation by CASA to find out what, where things are now. Since all of these things are, you know, just happening and a lot of, a lot of cities and states are um filing uh legal briefs against the, the executive orders or the orders that the sitting president is uh providing. That um, you know, just that we would get an update on how, where things are now. Uh, and with this, and what we can't find out what they, their suggestion is what we can do. And, and also uh talking to uh Mayor Be- Benitez. So just have a presentation from CASA to let us know where things are. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Ms. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I mean, reading through this and what was just read, I mean, there's plenty of things in here that basically is going to basically put the police department in a quandary. Where it says the city official affirms his opposition to any federal, state and local policies that were discriminating, not that, but um uh, limited, limitation on cooperation with ICE. Now, I did just call my niece to find out what happened at her school. So basically what happened at her school was ICE was outside the school. They grabbed up the parents and the parents, and you know, of course, the parents had to take the kids. So her class went from thirty that day down to fifteen the next day because now the parents are scared to take the kids to school because ICE is outside. Waiting for the, waiting to pick them up, waiting to pick your parents up. So, and I'm saying this, and it, and, and I asked her, I said, so what do y'all do? She's like, we can't do anything. See, like, we instructed that we have to release the students from school and once they're outside the school, we cannot intervene in any of that. Because ICE is out there to get them and there, there's nothing they can do. And that's what I'm trying to say. We, this makes them think that we can save them. We cannot save them. And we cannot have our police department step in the middle of a situation when they're being asked to enforce something that they got a court order to enforce. You know, so you said limitation on cooperation with ICE, they gotta cooperate with ICE. ICE has a um, has a, has a court order.
And that's what the resolution says.
But if no, but, but then again, you know, again, it says no city employee or department should use public resources, including personnel funds or equipment to assist ICE in enforcement of federal immigration laws unless required by law. So that means that you gotta figure out what's required by law, what's not required by law. I'm just saying that we're putting ourselves in a situation. I'm just thinking we're putting a target on their backs right now with this piece of legislation. I mean, my thing is the county got laws in place, that the county have laws in place. If Maryland got laws in place, let them have their laws in place. We can, we can, we can you know, work with them on that. But for us to put a piece of legislation out here saying we have a large immigration population and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. I think it puts a target on every immigrant back that lives in the city because now it's gonna be like, oh, they don't want that. Let's, let's check out their schools. They must got a large immigration population. Must be some, must be some illegal immigrants there somewhere. You know, I just think, I don't, I don't think it's a good, I, I just think it's not wise to do that. I really don't. Cause it is putting a target on their back. It's, it's gonna draw attention to them. It's gonna get out there. Nothing, social media is all over the place. And I guarantee you, they're gonna be up at Savannah Woods eventually, um, standing outside there. You know, so I, I just think that it's not, we, we shouldn't do, that's my personal opinion. And then, you know, immigration and another seven, again. I'm not against immigration. I just don't like illegal immigration. That's just my point. I mean, I mean, that's just my preference. And I say, you know, if, 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 if the laws are put in place for you to follow, you gotta follow the laws that they have put in place. Just like I gotta follow the laws that are put in place that I swore to uphold. So if they're gonna break the law and come across the border and it's gonna be a misdemeanor, then put a misdemeanor on their records. We got too many people in jail right now and me, because I'm having to find, find too hard to explain these records of people who cannot get jobs because they have a misdemeanor on their record and they did it twenty years ago. You know, so again, I'm just saying that this piece of legislation, I think is gonna bring attention to, bring the wrong type of attention to the people that we're trying to protect. So that's just my personal opinion and, you know, that's it. So, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Uh, one, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
No, you could go ahead, Council President. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, I'll just say one, it is I think the um some of the things that are happening is truly sad to witness uh right now. Um, while I understand Councilor Herring's point and, you know, and respect his point and understand, you know, everything about legal versus illegal immigration. And, and I understand what Councilwoman Fareed is talking about, different immigration um status. Um, I, I do think that the whole issue should be handled very delicately. Um, and I don't think that it is being handled delicately. I, I do think that, um, you know, in some cases, you know, um detention deportation is, is part of the, the progress for people who have broken the law and things like that. But it what I believe this legislation is to be uh is to be a support of just families who are just scared right now of just what is gonna happen with them. No matter what status they are, because you know, no matter how you slice or dice it. Uh, I honestly think that people who are here legally are gonna get swept up in the, in this. Um, and then there's gonna be a, oh, I'm sorry, you know, we, you know, made a mistake. Uh, and, you know, that's just my personal opinion. Uh, but I, I do feel for, for families who are being torn apart because of all of this. Um, and I do wanna make sure that as much as we can uh facilitate some sort of um some sort of comfort and security for people who are concerned. Uh, whether they have, whether they are directly affected or indirectly affected. Um, and I'm glad that Councilman Herring was able to get back to us with what actually happened with their school. They weren't taking kids, they were outside waiting for um uh, parents who then were able to take their kids with them. Cause my concern is just the, you know, families being split up. And how can we as a city be there for uh, for families that are split up? Um, I don't have all the answers. Clearly, I don't think I have any answers right now. About that, the changes that's happened in such a small amount of time and the changes that continue to happen. Uh, but I do think that coming up with ideas as uh, how we as um servants of the city, the council, uh, and the mayor, uh, can best serve our citizens. Yeah, and I'll leave it there. Um, with that, I'll go to Councilwoman Gill first and then I'll come to you, uh, Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you, Council President. I am, um, so let me just start off by saying one thing and then after that I'm gonna go and say something else as far as my sentiments are concerned. So I will say that um, as I read it, I am in support of this particular legislation. I understand it. I know about laws. And if the ju- if a judge, a federal judge sends anyone to come get anyone, um, we have to abide. So I totally um get everything. So I, I want to say that. I um also agree with what you just shared, Council President. So I will, um, I'll save time on this call to not go um and repeat what you're saying. I will say however, that there's, there are different types of immigration. There's refugees. And the United States did or does, um, I don't know what's gonna happen, have a refugee program where people um flee their country and cross borders and come into this country in particular because of what type of persecution and danger they are facing in their country. What has typically happened however, is the US, we talk about xenophobic policies. The United States in particular, shouldn't come as a surprise, has had a history of xenophobic policies where people from countries that have people that look like us on this call um, are not necessarily welcomed. But people who come from Eurocentric countries such as Syria or Ukraine, they are welcomed. And so that's a part of the legislation that I really, really want to stress that um, and, and call out. So thank you for, for writing that. The last thing that I wanna say now is about my sentiments. I feel that as the only um person on council who comes from an immigrant background, first generation, my parents have accents, um, and my relatives have accents. I am trying to not take offense to the timing of this legislation and the timing of these conversations. Because I have been dealing with the persecution of immigrants for a long time. Two years ago, there was, you know, persecution of immigrants, you know, crossing, you know, the, the border in Texas and they were getting beaten. And we all saw the news where the president was assassinated. We all saw how the gangs and the militias took over my family home where I was raised, where my mother was born, where my grandmother was born. Where her, my great, great grandmother occup- uh purchased with her husband for the family to live in. It's currently occupied by the mil- by the militia. So I get all of that. For me, I just hope that this is not a legislation that is being voted upon for, because it's in style to talk about these ICE raids, because it's in vogue. Because now suddenly, you know, everybody's like paying attention to it, so we have to do something. I would, I hope that when and if we vote on this legislation, that is, it is done with genuineness and concern for the immigration population, as opposed to just doing it because it's in style right now, because it's a hot topic. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. Um, my comments actually are, are gonna be addressing Councilwoman, what Councilwoman Gill said. Um, in terms of it being in vogue or just a, a popular thing now, uh, that is definitely not the reason why I brought this legislation forward. I brought it forward after getting myself educated about the impact to our potential um city and, and what our residents could be potentially facing um in response to this. And I felt that it was important to make sure that we were safeguarding um the spaces in our city for, for those residents, so that they would still feel comfortable to come to the backpack drive and be able to get a backpack without being fear of questioning where, what their um, what their status is apart from, apart from their um residency, which is something that we require, you know, for, for most things where we're giving away things. Um, but also just to make sure that the city of Glen Arden is not being silent um in this time of, and it, it being significant. And I definitely can appreciate the work that Councilwoman Gill is putting in for the immigrant community and how she um is a voice and an advocate for uh the Haitian community and being, you know, and as she said, a first-generation immigrant, recognizing what these issues are firsthand. So I think that we should be supporting her and other immigrants um in our community as well as those who deem themselves to be allies of the immigrant population and making sure that we are doing all that we can. I think for many of us, um, it's not it's not personalized until you know a person that it's happening to. And I think with it becoming more prevalent um and more in our faces now and recognizing that these could be our neighbors that are removed from their homes or, you know, our children, friends of our children that can be removed, it is bringing it closer to home for everyone. Um, and wh- whether that's a, a good or a bad thing, I think that the spotlight should be on how we're dealing with this and trying to be as delicate and sensitive and on the right side of history um with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Councilman.
Question, I just wanted some clarification on this piece of legislations, uh, do wanna go back to it. So item number four says desi- designation of sensitive areas. What does that mean? What would the city do in that instance?
Hold on, let me go to it one second.
You wanna bring it back up? Sorry, couldn't.
Let's say item number four. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Fareed.
Item number four, I'm sorry, item number four, designation of sensitive areas.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure your question.
Saying, so what is this, what is the, a sensitive area? So you're saying it should be free, should feel, feel safe from federal immigration enforcement actions? And I just told you that, you know, the school is not, the schools are required to release these children. That's not a safe area. And so somebody read this, they think they're gonna go to the school and be safe. Or they're gonna go to a place of worship or healthcare facility.
What you described was the students um or their parents being detained or questioned or whatever outside of the school. ICE did not go in the school and take those children out of the classrooms.
But ICE did not go in the school, but the school by law is required to release the children out of, they cannot stay in the school. They have to release the children. And that's when ICE waited for the parents to pick up the children. Cause they know they have to let them out of school. They cannot hold the children in the school. So the county is not even telling them to keep the children in the school from ICE if they're outside. And they, and they can, and they told they cannot intervene. So, I mean, it's not like, I mean, the reading is they think they can go to the school and be safe. And they're not gonna be safe. You know, and I, I mean, I'm, I haven't heard the county opening up schools as making them, making them as a, a safe haven with, that ICE cannot go in. You know, again, like, like they say, the children have to be released from the school. That's the rule. You gotta release the children from the school. And if ICE comes up there, you cannot intervene, you know. So uh, I'm just saying, you know, I'm looking at this. I'm just saying, I don't want anybody to think, to read this. Any immigrant out here to read this and think that we can say, we gonna be able to protect them from whatever happens. And that's not, that's the father's thing from the truth. Um, and let me just say this, I know people who fled, you know, prosecution. I knew somebody, I worked with somebody that's from Guatemala and they fled from Guatemala because there was an uprising there. Her father got killed, her uncle got killed because they were in the military. She came here and she went to New York, lived in New York, made it, made it, did very well, worked with me. You know, in, in accounting, you know, so I'm not, and I, I, you know, I understand, you know, you know, you have refugee. But even that, he just, he, the, the president just denied that same refugee status to thirty thousand people from Venezuela who were here under the, who, who fled the regime of the president down in Venezuela, because he was, they say sadistic or whatever. He just lived, uh, removed this, uh, their safe protection. So they may be considered illegal, whereas Biden gave them um immigration status. Gave him a, 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 a safe immigration status to come here. So I'm just saying, I just don't, I just don't want nothing put out here that's gonna make people think that we're gonna save them from ICE, which we cannot do. And I'm just saying, I, I just think that when you look at legislation like this, I don't want them to feel anything. I think when you throw this out there, I think, I honestly believe, I'm telling you, with this man that's in the White House, being as petty as he can be, he'll see something like that and say, go to, go to Glen Arden, just because, even though we're a little town, just to show his might. Just to show, throw his weight around. I mean, if he's down here in Clinton, it won't be long before he's in Glen Arden. But I'm just, I just say, like I said, again, I'm just saying that I think that the best we could do is give them any information that they need and, and time to be careful. That's all you really can do. And we cannot uh pass a piece of legislation that's gonna throw our police officers in the middle of an issue between the federal government. As the chief said, they gotta follow the federal law. If they got legal paperwork, they gotta follow it. You know, this is clearly saying we won't cooperate. You know, so I, I just wanted to know, I, I'm just like, again, I just see things in here and I just like, okay, someone's gonna read this and think they got, um, you know, we got a safe haven for them and we actually don't. All right, thank you.
Uh, again, Council President, I just wanna clarify that that is not what the resolution says. It does not say that if they have a warrant that we will not cooperate. It says that we will only cooperate if they have a warrant.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you, uh, Councilman Free. Thank you, Councilman Maheran. Um. I guess as we close out this, the discussion on this piece of legislation. So. I just want to put out there, so. I guess the personal adult. Um, I haven't really been paying too much attention to uh, the news. Uh, because I knew what was coming. Uh, so I tried not to ride the wave of highs and lows and try to, I've been off social media. Um, and someone asked me a question of um. Uh, related to everything that's going on. And I responded with, look, I'm just. I I did my job. I voted for however I voted for. Um, and. I am waiting to with my popcorn just to see just like the fallout of everything that's gonna happen, you know. The person who won one and I guess to the victor goes the spoils. Uh, and I was reminded of how harsh my. Um, response was because I was only looking at it one way. I was looking at it for the, the bottom of fallout. For uh, all of the supporters who thought that they were voting for um, the right candidate. Only to be affected most by the policies that are going to be enacted. But they didn't consider. Uh, the other ones who did not necessarily vote for uh, the person who won, who are being affected. And it opened my eyes uh, and just to realize of just how many people are hurting during this time. Uh, one, whoever wins should be the president of all Americans, not just some Americans. Uh, but even on this situation, uh, the issue of immigration, which is so delicate. Uh, because on one side you do have a, a, you know, a, a portion of people who are coming into the, the country illegally. But that's not the full gambit of what immigration is. And even if we had someone who was here illegally in the city of Glen Arden and we didn't know that they were here illegally. They were still residents of the city of Glen Arden. They were still what we would have deemed citizens. And for them to be a citizen for years in the city of Glen Arden. And then one day just be gone like that. It does have an impact. You know, whether they were here legally or illegally, the, the point is that they were our neighbors. They're part of our community. Uh, and so even if they're gone, well, the neighbor that's, you know, next door, they're gonna be impacted. Because they may have had that person over for dinner for years and didn't know that they were, you know, here illegally. Or they were here legally and just got swept in to the whole mass deportation. Um, and so that's what's, I don't have the answers to everything. Um, I, I certainly uh, can sympathize so. Uh, have empathy for everyone who is affected by this. Um, and learn how to have even more empathy, um, and how people are just affected. And I just want to make sure as a servant of this city that uh, I and other council members who serve the city and even, you know, neighbors. Uh, how we could best support our community, no matter which way people go. Whether people are removed or people are just fearful of being removed, that we just be a solid community. Uh, and support one another and abide by the law at the same time. Uh, so with that. We'll move on to. The next item. Which is. Oh, that was it. No, it wasn't it. That was thirty seven. Now, uh, R dash thirty eight dash twenty twenty five, a resolution affirming the city of Glen Arden's commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. DEI initiative, Councilwoman Farid. I'll bring it up. Give me one second. Alright. Councilwoman Farid.
Yes, so this is a resolution affirming the city of Glen Arden's commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments related to this? Legislation?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. Uh, yeah, again, I'm not trying to pick nitpick or anything, but why are we doing? Why are we passing this? Initiative. I, I, I'm, I'm not fully understanding when we're African American community and. Usually DEI initiatives usually flip the other way. Um, what, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm not fully understanding. The purpose of what we reaffirming when it comes down to this piece of legislation. I, I, I mean, if you're gonna explain, just give me a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman Farid.
Sure, would you like me to read the resolution again?
Uh, if you want to, you can. I'm, I'm looking at it right now, but yeah, I mean, if you want to, you can.
Whereas the city of Glen Arden recognizes that diversity, equity and inclusion are fundamental principles. Essential to fostering a thriving, inclusive and prosperous community and. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is committed to ensuring that every resident, regardless of race, ethnicity. Gender, sexual orientation, ability, socioeconomic status or background has equal access to opportunities. Resources and the ability to participate fully in civic and economic life and. Whereas the ideals of DEI are deeply rooted in our nation's founding principles and have been reaffirmed through historic legislative actions. Such as the Civil Act Rights Act of nineteen sixty four, the Americans with Disabilities Act. And other policies aimed at advancing justice and equal opportunity for all. And whereas. Research and experience demonstrate that communities that embrace DEI principles benefit from enhanced innovation. Economic growth and a stronger sense of belonging among residents. And. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is committed to adopting policies and practices that promote DEI across all municipal operations. Including hiring and employment practices, public engagement, service delivery, economic development and education and. Whereas the city of Glen Arden seeks to lead by example in fostering and welcoming environment where all individuals feel valued, respected. And empowered to contribute to the success and progress of the community. And. Whereas municipalities play a critical role in enacting policies that ensure equitable opportunities. And dismantle systemic barriers that prevent full participation in society and. Whereas the city of Glen Arden encourages other local municipalities to enact and uphold policies that affirm DEI. And promote equitable access to opportunities and resources for all residents. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, that. The city of Glen Arden affirms its commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion as a core value and guiding principle in governance, policymaking and municipal operations. Two, the city of Glen Arden pledges to continue developing and implementing DEI centered policies in hiring. Workforce development, procurement, community engagement and public service delivery. Three. The city of Glen Arden encourages businesses, schools, community organizations and other institutions within the city to adopt and uphold principles. DEI principles that foster inclusivity, remove barriers to opportunity and promote equitable economic and social outcomes. Four, the city of Glen Arden will work collaboratively with local, state and national partners to advocate for policies. And initiatives that advance DEI and ensure that all individuals have the resources and support needed to achieve their full potential. Five, the city of Glen Arden calls upon other municipalities to join this effort by enacting policies. That affirm and and strengthen DEI initiatives to build more inclusive and equitable communities. Be it further resolved, the copies of this resolution be forwarded to the appropriate folks.
Alright, Councilman Harren, does you have a question?
Yeah, because I'm like, I'm looking, I mean, you know, we had a DEI. Workshop in my job and, and it seems like it's more focused on the workplace. Um. And I'm not sure why we're. Even entertaining this. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, Glen Arden has been more diverse than most places I know of. I mean. You know, we've had anybody, we've had people who were disabled that we've had, you know, we've, you know, we've always been open and welcoming to. You know, all the, all demographics that are out there. Um. I just, and it seems like this is. Like I said, it's, it's, it's. DEI is mostly geared to the workplace and inclusion in the workplace and equity in the workplace. Um, to um, like you said, help employees from marginalized groups succeed. Um, I'm just, I'm just don't understand why we, why we really need this piece of legislation. And like I said, again, I mean. I agree with DEI. I think it's really sorely needed, you know. Like I say, coming from the sixties, I mean. We started talking about something that was happening in the sixties here in twenty twenty five, you know, being excluded, being discriminated against in the workplace. You know, just because of, you know, of your, your skin. But um, yeah, I just don't understand why we need it here in Glen Arden. And that's what I was trying to be clarification on. I mean, I, I read it, but I still. Yeah, I still don't understand um, why we would need that here. You know, and that's it. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
So Council President, I just, I just want to um, for the record, state that, you know, our resolution is a formal expression of the intent. Opinion or decision of a legislative body. So I do not want to take for granted. That because Glen Arden has been this way, that it will always be that way. And I think that's part of what. Is happening now. There's an awakening around issues that or, you know, things that we've previously took for granted. And didn't really, you know, understand the impact of unraveling those things until they've been unraveled. And so as a city, we're taking a stance that this is our um. You know, opinion and we're, we're supporting this in a formal way. Um, I modeled this after. A bill that Senator Benson put forward in the Maryland General Assembly um, with, with similar language, as I said, I modeled it after that. Uh, just affirming. And unfortunately, is, is, it is a sad fact that in today, we have to affirm these things by documenting. That we will, you know, provide safety for our, our people under the law, that we will. Promote inclusivity and equal opportunity for, for all. These things may have been taken for granted and, you know, maybe with the people who are here now in this um. You know, council will uphold those things or people, you know, in the administration will uphold those. But if we don't have it documented that this is what our stance is. Then it's not clear, in my opinion.
Councilwoman Farid. Are there any other questions or comments on this legislation? Here and none. That is all we have on the agenda for um. Um, the introduction of legislation for the month of February. Um, now open the floor to council members' comments on any of the administrative reports.
Um, yeah, I just have a few questions for the city manager and um. Treasurer. I was going through, I told you last week when we were talking about the elevator, and I know you're coming back with some other numbers. Me coming up with some more information on the elevator and um, you know, I was looking at the, the uh. Two contracts from the elevator. Um, Mr. President, can I share my screen? I just want to make them aware of some numbers that they need to look at with this. I mean, I, I guess my.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, I just enabled it. You can go ahead.
Okay. Can you see it? Because that's okay.
Yeah, I can see it. You might wanna um, take it up to like a hundred and twenty.
How's that?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so yeah, so um. I just compared the two contracts and this is what I'm, 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 I'm kind of getting frustrated with is that we get these contracts and we don't look at them. Especially when you get two contracts that are so diverse, um, their numbers are just so out of whack. So I took the Cor- Corinna contract and the Nichols contract and I just looked, uh, compared their cost estimates and some of them numbers line up, some of them don't. Some of them, they kind of summarize, but I noticed three things in here, I mean, about four things in here that really bring me pause. Um, and this was, this was, was kind of concerning me with Nichols. Because when they gave this number for general requirements of three hundred and eight thousand dollars. And I went to Corinna. And they're only giving twenty nine thousand, that's a two hundred and seventy nine, two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollar swing. There's something wrong with that. We really need to start looking at these contracts much closer. Um, same thing with the steel, steel hundred and nine. Nichols, a hundred and twenty two thousand, you know, that, that's thirteen thousand dollars right there. We have some other numbers in here, but I think these kind of sum themselves up. This is, it's almost a match. Um, this is the biggest thing right here, the elevator, because I asked them personally last time about this three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Was that for? Building out the elevator? And they're like, yes, that's to build the actual elevator that's gonna go into the shaft. He's like, it's three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. But Corinna only charging ninety two thousand, that's a two hundred and twenty one thousand dollar difference. Um, HVAC, twenty five thousand, Corin- Corinna, um, you know, Nichols. Uh, forty three thousand, eighteen thousand dollar difference. Electrical, thirty nine thousand five hundred. Uh, for Corinna, Nichols, sixty one thousand, so I mean, that's a. Those are some major differences. And if you look at the, the bottom line, it's like two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars and. Uh, a variance between the two contracts. And that's what I was trying to figure out what it was. And I'm just like, we gotta start looking at these things because. This, this, we need to question that be a, so we got a high and we got a low, so we probably gonna need a third to see what, what's gonna come in the middle because. I thought that number was entirely too high. Um, and, and, and. Just looking at this number here, the general requirements, which is just a bunch of stuff, you know, um, thrown in there. And it's just like you, you're padding this thing. So I'm, I'm just saying, could y'all just really need to look closely at that? Um, because um, you know, that these numbers swing too much and these numbers are too far off. And I definitely was sending you all this um, spreadsheet. Um, on, on, uh, on this. Um. That's, that's, that was it for that. Um, so yes, I will send you the spreadsheet with my comparisons. Um, I think that, you know, you need to really look at that. Um, and they need to explain these numbers if that's who we're gonna go with. Um, and, and probably gotta get a third one because these numbers are too, they're too far off. Um, again, another thing. I want to ask the city manager, so I finally, and I wanna um. Finally got on monday dot com. Um. And uh, again, thank you, Councilwoman Farid, for giving me access because now I can see a whole lot of what's going on. Um. And I'm looking at GPS. You got like seventeen vehicles that don't have GPS on it?
No, so uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Council President. Uh, yes, Mr. Harren. Um, we actually have about six uh, other devices that still need to be installed on the. So yes, actually seventeen, you're correct, that need to can be installed on the police vehicles and the other uh. I think nine or eleven have just been ordered and I can get that information to you and confirm. They're due to begin this week. Uh, we actually just confirmed the finality of those, those final ones. And then there's uh, onboard training specifically with links up. Uh, that you and any other council person will be invited to after uh, department heads or the responsible parties for each department. Uh, get their training as well.
So you're saying all I'm gonna be up at the end of this, all I'm gonna be in soon?
I'm hoping I should have to know later than Thursday or Friday. Hopefully I'll see an email tomorrow relative to the tracking information for the final order of the remaining devices.
Okay, and so all of these devices went on on January twenty first.
Well, I should say the report itself in monday dot com.
They went on before.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright. Alright, okay, so I'm just, yeah, okay. Now I thought when you said you had already did some of public works, no? None of public work September time?
And we had the test devices with the other group and then um, once it was determined links up was uh, the best option to go with. Um, the new devices have not come in just yet. The new devices have not come in just yet.
Is the bus on it?
The bus is part of the list, but it's not, the GPS device is, is not on the bus yet. The bus, uh, public work car and Coles cars are the, the final ones, uh, that need to go on those vehicles.
Hmm. Okay, getting back to the bus, when do you, I mean, I'm still trying to figure out why we don't have fare car machine on it.
It's on there. Yes, actually.
So you did put a fare car machine on there? I thought you said you couldn't put it on there.
Well, uh, until I can get the final determination from the state highway, I think for the sake of being able to receive monies and fares and stay consistent, uh, the fare, the fare box is actually back on the bus.
Okay, cause I don't think the state have anything to do with what we collect in any way of fares when we come down to them in this for government. I don't think they, they have anything to do with that. Um, okay, um. I have some other questions for you, but I'm not gonna hold up the meeting, because I went through the finance reports. So I got a lot of questions in those finance reports, and I might just send, send you in a treasurer a list of them. So, and y'all can get back to me before, um, the next meeting. Yeah, it's quite a, it's quite a few things I'm interested in, some things I'm gonna be asking for, some reports for. So, um, that's about it for me. All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Herring. Do you need those reports before the next meeting?
If, if they can get them, they could. I mean, they're not, they should already, they should, they probably just need to make copies of what, what, what I'm asking for. Shouldn't I, it's not something they gotta create, it's just copies.
Okay. I just want to make sure that what you requested, that you actually have it in, in, in a good amount of time so that you can do. Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Are there any other questions related to the administrative reports before we head into the topics of discussion? Okay, here are none. We'll move on to topics of discussion. Uh, first up, will, uh, use of Gold Room by Zion Church for ongoing community events? Councilwoman Farid?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This was a proposal that was, um, requested or submitted, um, last year, and the council just did not make a decision on it, so I'm bringing it back. The, um, the church would like to host events, um, host childrenly related events in the Gold Room, um, or another community space that we deem appropriate. And these events would be targeted towards children, recreational activities. Um, do you want to open the, if you can, the, the attachment, please?
Second?
It's called the M, MWCP one. Or I don't know what it's called actually in the link.
All right, I, I have it. I'm moving over to my next other screen.
Okay, so they wanted to offer, um, dance, a skills club, and Awana, which is, excuse me, a nationwide program. Excuse me, that is offered midweek at many commu- in many communities. Um, this, I mean, pretty, oh, you're highlighting it. Sorry, I'm looking at it on my computer and not on your screen here. Um, so they're looking to service the Glen Arden community with this program as well as, um, opening it up to um, the Zion community as well. And the first one would be offering a dance as a midweek community program. The skills club offering that to students as well.
Okay.
And I think, um, you know, this was brought forward last year, and it was also, I think, one of the citizens men- made mention of it a couple of meetings ago, asking about activities in the city for children. Um, I don't think this would address all of the potential activities that we could do for children, but I think this is a way we can bring some services in um, for children in the city of Glen Arden and using our space.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President, and this is a, also to me, a sensitive subject. Because of the fact, number one, uh, being a member of First Baptist Church for the last twenty years, I always, um, and because, uh, Pastor Jenkins and, and Pastor Battle are, are close in, uh, thinking because I've also been at, uh, at Zion for a little bit. Has this gone past, uh, uh, Pastor Battle? Because I know that Pastor Jenkins, any events that, that the church does, they want to keep them on site. They don't, uh, it's very rarely it, I've never seen at all that he's done anything offsite because they have the space to do whatever. I mean, I remember when I was taking exercise classes at First Baptist. They just took, uh, they have the walls that they take down into different areas. They took the wall down and we had our exercise classes there. There was nothing ever done offsite. Uh, I'm familiar with Awana because my son attended Awana when he was a, a student at Capital Christian Academy in Largo. So I understand what they do, but as, and then the Gold Room is our enterprise zone where we make, uh, uh, the, this, this, it's, it generates revenue for us. So, and then also, we've had an issue before with, um, uh, children and, um, things happening in the Gold Room that with the city was unaware of, and things were put in, supposedly put in place where that wouldn't happen before. And I know that at First Baptist, when you're dealing with children, everybody goes through a background check, everybody gets fingerprinted now. So uh, are those things, have those things been taken into consideration when, uh, coming to the city uh, with this, uh, request to use the facility? Uh, I don't, like I said, the Gold Room is our enterprise zone where it's supposed to generate revenue. So to, uh, you know, use it for, um, opportunities like this, I don't think the Gold Room would be a, a, the place to do it. Um, the community center, yes, maybe, uh, well, yes, but not the Gold Room. But anyway, like I said, the first, my first question, has this been, is this, is this something has, is, are we gonna receive a letter from the, uh, hierarchy of Zion requesting to use our facility for these programs?
I don't, I don't think I understand your question. What do you mean, receive a letter? This is, this is coming from the, the church.
Okay, what I'm saying, like I'm saying, is Keith Battle sending us a, a request saying we would like to use your facility because this is something that he's aware of and he's gonna, that, that he knows is happening? Or the pastor at, uh, the Land Oversight, are they gonna send us a request to use our facility? And let us know what the criteria is gonna be? And, uh, uh, if the people are going to, that they're, um, assigned to this, are they gonna be, uh, fully vetted and fingerprinted? We're do- we're talking about children. Cause like I said, the city of Glen Arden has already went through this, um, with a choir supposedly, and then come to find out there was something else going on with the children. We don't want to see that happen again.
Okay, so, so this is coming through the extreme, um, leadership, which is the children's ministry, and this would not have, uh, all, all planned events are discussed with the pastor of Landover Campus before they are sought after. So if you need something beyond this from the pastor in order to, I guess I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what you want to do. Are you trying to make sure that these people are authorized to make this request? Um, then we can do that. But in terms of the background checks, the all volunteers are background checked because all the volunteers are already working with children at Zion.
But see, as, I, I don't, I don't know that. Be- that's what I'm saying. Are they just gonna send us a formal request and a criteria of what's gonna happen and then give us, uh, the information that the persons are gonna be vetted? Or are already vetted? Because this is telling us about the activities. It doesn't, there's no request to the city of Glen Arden saying, um, this is what we, this is what Zion Church, hi, I'm the pastor, or Pastor Battle has asked me to express to you all that we want to use your facility because, like I said, normally the, the church events for, um, that I've known for First Baptist and for Zion have never left their, their property. It has always been on their property because they have a certain criteria that they follow.
Okay, so this is for Zion Church, not for First Baptist Church of Glen Arden. Um, this conversation, I believe, started with, uh, Ms. Bun with the Gold Room. Um, she was contacted to discuss what the, um, opportunities were for this, for this space. Um, I think I, I did express that the Gold Room is an enterprise operation. Um, I don't think that it has to be in the Gold Room. I think the question is just, would the city of Glen Arden be willing to co-sponsor this activity, these series of activities with the church, um, by providing the space and that Zion would provide the volunteers and the materials, et cetera, to facilitate the program.
Okay, and you say it's an ongoing activity. So how many days a week are we talking about? Is this every day or three days a week? Cause I know a lot for my son was, uh, uh, three, four days a week.
So it's right here on the screen. When, when will it meet?
Okay. Okay, once a week, once a week, once a week, on Wednesdays. Okay.
And this would be after school activities for to the children, after school time?
Okay, so we would have to provide, if it's in the community center, we would have to provide a, uh, um, a gold room, not gold, I'll say, uh, our, uh, events, uh, planner, not a events planner, but one of the events persons to open the, the room, someone to be there, someone to clean up. The city is gonna have to provide that. Yes, no?
Is that what's, what, are you, it sounds like you're saying that's what's required.
I think, I think that the city would want, you know, th- there is their space and they oversee it and they want, would want to, you know, just like with any other event in the community room, there's somebody there to, you know, until the event is over.
So, so what's, what's your question? Will we do the same or?
Uh, as a city, I'm sure we would need to do the same, but, uh, uh, I think the, the personnel for the events are part-time, so we would have to bring in someone and to have them, they would have to be paid.
Uh, so are you asking me a question? Is there something that you want me to find out? Or I don't, I, I don't, I don't.
No, I think we, we need to find out as a council, you know, what, what, what part the city is gonna play in this and where we're going to, uh, 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 release finances, how we're going to, uh, you know, uh, oversee what's going on in our, in our, in our space. If this is something that the council wants to do. Wouldn't you agree?
I wouldn't expect it to be any different than any other events that we have in the spaces.
Okay, so I think the community room is like fifty dollars, uh. Would the city pick up the tab for that or is Zion gonna pay for that?
Their request is for, to use the space for free. That's what the request is.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And is, I think, Ms. Bun is on the call. Ms. Bun?
Yes, I'm on the call. So I originally, I spoke with Zion, um, they sent me a, um, a, well, a email, uh, requesting that, um, the information about utilizing our facility. I did, um, uh, they mentioned both the community center and the Gold Room. Um, I do believe, um, because, you know, of course, we, we receive more events at the Gold Room. Um, I did mention possibly if it was approved, that the community center will be a better um, fit for them to go if it was approved. Um, I don't see it being an issue. Um, again, you know, based off of our weekly schedule, based off of, you know, we, we, I pre, um, you know, uh, do schedules anyway, based off of what's coming up. So I will make sure that I have a team over there, um, to make sure, you know, we're, um, everything's opened up and closed and everything. Um, but again, um, it's just the beginning stages, you know, I, again, we need to, you know, know more information of like when exactly it's gonna be. And then once it's approved, I can definitely have my team over there. That's no problem.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bun.
You're welcome.
Um, Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. I think that the offerings are great. It's actually a really great idea. I just want to actually raise something to the broader, um, council, which was, um, messaging because I know a few years ago, when Glen Arden Housing Authority, I, I had come to the council on behalf of Glen Arden Housing Authority and asked if they can use the Gold Room to hold their resident council meetings. And we were like, no, they can go here, they can go there, this is an enterprise. So if we were to go this route, I want to be clear that the messaging is, is, is succinct that we can share why we are going this route versus going with other agencies that had come and made this a similar request. Not, when I say similar request, I'm speaking specifically about using the Gold Room, you know, for gratis. So that's, that's one thing I want to say. So great opportunities, but again, um, how do we relay, should we go and say yes? Should, if, if it's up for a vote, how do we communicate that to other folks who had asked to use our facility and we couldn't, or sorry, we chose not to. And again, I'm, I'm specific, I'm specifically talking about the Glen Arden Housing Authority.
Councilwoman Farid?
I just wanted to ask Councilwoman Gill, what were, what was the reason why? I personally, let me just say, I think that if there are opportunities and people who want to come in the city, provided that they are, of course, background checked and, and safe to engage with our children, that, um, I'm in support of that generally. So that's why I'm asking the question, do, what was the reason why? And was it this council?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was this council. Oh, I'm sorry, Council President, may I answer? I apologize.
Sure.
Okay, um, yes, it was this council. And if I can recall, it was, it, it was, don't age me all. It was twenty twenty one. Um, probably, it, it was September, October-ish, because I recall there was a resident council that was established for the Glen Arden Housing Authority, but they didn't have a place to meet. Um, and the way the resident council was set up was they would gather, the then coordinator would get residents who would want to voice their concerns with whatever problems they were having with the, the, um, I don't want to say administration, what do you call those people? The staff, um, and just to empower them to advocate for themselves. And so because they didn't have a place to meet, I was approached at the time because I was newly rotating, rotated off the count, the housing authority board of commissioners and the council's reasoning was the Gold Room is an enterprise and we could make this is basically us losing money if we were to give them, um, that arrangement to meet and that they should try to look elsewhere. Um, some of the stuff I heard today, um, the community room, the Teresa Banks maybe, or even the Glen Arden Library or places like that. But it was stated that we should be trying to make the Gold Room make money, not you know, give it to an agency that didn't have any funding, any money to pay. And that was the reason why I asked also was because they did not have money, um, to pay. So for me, I, I think the, the Zion opportunity is a great opportunity for me, you know, but I just want to make sure that how it's communicated is clear and doesn't come off like we're choosing one over the other without an actual reason why we're choosing one, not the other, or what, yeah. we're choosing one over the other without an actual reason why we're choosing one, not the other, or what, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, for me, um, I would um definitely say um, the Gold Room should be out. Um, you're talking about kids and then you're talking about, um, I mean, people still have events on Wednesday nights or, I mean, different times of nights, um, during the week. Um, and it is a cost. Um, and the other thing is, um, as far as the community center, uh, one of the, the Councilwoman Jones said, um, so would we have to pay um extra overtime for uh, you know, for the the staff to be up there? Or and then, of course, you have to go in there, clean up and and um, uh, after the event. Um, my other concern is, um, and and then you're talking about free, um, even though I know that we not, don't really rent the the um, community center is more or less, from what I understand, fifty dollars is just to help with the, you know, clean up and doing, you know, uh, getting getting the run back to um, where it can be um used again. So, um, and the other concern I have i- is in in which, I mean, I was thinking about that before Councilwoman uh uh Gion said anything, is though how, you know, I mean, say, you know, you know, other people just wanna do that. I mean, how can we distinguish who can do that and who can't, um, you know, have routine um events up there, or or anywhere, even in the Gold Room, um, for free? Or, um, you say after school, so I don't know whether our um staff will be still working during that time or whether we would have to give them overtime or comp time. So we just have to weigh in the expenses um that um would uh come for doing that. And um, a this concern about, you know, how that would affect other other people that maybe Glen Ardeners that say that they wanna have, you know, Girl Scout meeting every uh Tuesday or whatever, so we just have to take that consideration before we vote. I mean, it's, it could be a um, a lot to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farid?
Um, yes, uh, the proposal or what they've sent us, it, they're saying the the community room and I and I expressed that to them as well, as well as what Ms. Bun said, so they're not asking for the Gold Room. I don't know if I said that or if that was just the assumption, but the, it says that they're asking for the community room. Um, I think this in terms of like the differentiator between this and um maybe other groups is that this is really more so an exchange of services. Like they're offering these services, you can't get dance classes for free, right? So they're offering those to the children of the city of Glen Arden in exchange for them being able to use the room for free. So it's not that they're using the room for free for their own purposes. They're providing a service to the children of the city in these three different ways, through dance classes, through skills development, through Iwana, things that typically, if you wanted your children to participate in, you would have to pay for. So the city is now gonna be able to provide that as an opportunity in lieu of the fifty dollars that we would pay otherwise. So to me, that is the difference between even a Girl Scout troop using the space because they're using the space only for the children, the girls in that troop. Right? And there's like ten girls in a troop versus what they're offering to us. So it's it's not just a take from us, they're giving us something in return, which is an opportunity again for our children to learn dance, to develop their skills, to participate in. I know I'm saying the name wrong, Quana, I think I'm saying it wrong, Iwana.
Um, yeah. Okay.
Can we make a decision because they are trying to start this program in March? And we kinda have been not finalizing a decision since this was first brought forward several months ago last year.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I'm gonna just say this, you know, I know it ain't gonna be popular, but I don't agree with it, I really don't. If you do it for one church, you gotta do it for all, and that's gonna be the problem. You can book that, they can, you can have every church, if every church decided to do a program and give back to the city and they booked that community room, we'd never have it for the citizens. The citizens gotta pay fifty dollars and they get, and and they're wrong. You know, um, in lieu of whatever, fifty dollars is is a small amount to pay just to have some services. I don't think we should give anything away for free, I think we should get the Gold Room away for free to organizations. I don't think we should be giving, um, I mean, and and that's you only do it for all organizations. And and that's the rule of thumb, when you're in in government, if you do for one, you do for all. And 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 to have this, and I'm just not understanding, doesn't um, First Baptist Church of Glen Arden have a a a, that's a big building over there, they ain't got no space over there that they can house this program in, or do they even offer the program over there? Um, and I'm gonna tell you honestly, we partnered with First Baptist Church of Glen Arden through, in Glen Arden for years. I mean, First Baptist Church of Glen Arden for years, they funded Glen Arden Day a couple of years in a row, you know, so you know, I've seen what they've done and how they partner with us, they partners, partnered with us for Glen Arden Hills, you know? So they've been very, 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 very active in the community. Um, and I still wouldn't give them the room for free, you know, again, because it, because if I give it them a room for free, then I will have to give have to vote for every other church to get it for free, and I just don't think we should start that. Um, in the community room, again, you may have somebody that may wanna use the room on that night, and you may pick up. Once we get these, once we get these uh rules in place and these fees in place in the Gold Room, everybody may roll over to the uh community room. So I just don't agree with it, I just believe if you start it for one, you gotta do it for all. And and we've had other other people come to us and ask for uh to 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 have things in the in the room for free and bring services to the city. And I'm gonna tell you honestly, being one of the council members that was on there, on the council, and I'm not making any dispersions about any group or anything else, but what we had to go through with that choir and the incidents of what went down with that, that would have broke the city if we if we had lost that case. That would have literally broke the city, and I don't, I'm just not comfortable, honestly, truly having any more children groups in here, this does not sanction by the city of Glen Arden. This is a group that's gonna come and it's gonna be san- it's gonna, they gonna have their volunteers, you know, have their volunteers been vetted, you know, I don't know. You know, we don't know that, and then again, and if something does happen, will our insurance carrier cover it? Because they're all gonna be in our room. Um, you know, since we already went through this one time before and we told them we're gonna have safeguards in place to keep it from happening again. So, um, I just don't, I just don't agree with it, I mean, it sounded like a nice program, but, you know, it's it's, but, you know, to give it to them, give them a room for free, I don't agree with it because we got six or seven other churches in Glen Arden, and they may have a program too that they may wanna, they may wanna provide, you know? And again, like I said, I don't know, I don't know, you know, yeah, I just, I just don't agree with that, I'm I'm, you know. Like I said, it might be a nice program, but again, maybe, you know, they're on the First Baptist Church campus, First Baptist Church got a number of campuses, and Zion got a number of campuses too, from what I heard on the radio, they got at least four or five campuses. So I'm just not understanding why they wanna come to the city of Glen Arden um and get something for free. All right, thank you.
Council President?
Thank you, yes, Councilwoman Farid?
They they're bringing it to the city of Glen Arden because they want to partner with the city of Glen Arden. They wanna have it at Glen Arden facilities because they wanna offer it to Glen Arden residents. They absolutely have facilities. Green Belt Church is a phenomenal church, so if this was only for Zion Church members, they would host it there. They are trying to be a partner with the city of Glen Arden in similar ways that the city of um the First Baptist Church of Glen Arden has been. So again, that's the difference, this is not them coming because they don't have a space for this thing. This is them wanting to help and support the community by offering these services to the city. But I think we can just take a consensus if and decide, we can either tell them yes or no.
And you want us to take a census now or at the next meeting?
Well, I I, if we could, because we have kinda been pushing this off, right? This was, I forgot when, maybe September or October was the first time it was brought. It's been on the the um topic of discussion several times, the council members hadn't read the attached materials, hadn't had a chance to review it.
Okay, um, all right. Well, this is a consensus to move forward with uh Zion Church being able to use the community center to partner with the city of Glen Arden for the programs highlighted in the supporting documents, Dance Skills Club and Iwana. Um, well, I'll just go around. Um, well, Councilwoman Farid?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Gion?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
I'd like to see the formal request documents from the church.
So yes or no?
Uh, other than this paper that tells me about the events that they wanna have, I would like to see the abstain.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Harry?
Um, I'm gonna say no, and I and I really think we need to look at this closely because again, if something happens, whose insurance is gonna get hit? Do they have a blanket coverage policy that's gonna cover that group? So no, I don't I don't agree with that, I think that everybody should have the same opportunity. And my thing is this, again, uh uh, can I ask one question? I just wanna just ask this question. So is anybody a member of Zion Church?
I am a member.
If you're a member of Zion Church, you cannot vote on this. If you are a member, you cannot vote because your church is getting something for free. And that's, that's gonna be an ethics issue, so you really cannot vote on this because you are a member of that church. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, you cannot.
I think that's ridiculous, get the lawyer and.
Read the Ethics Code, you see, that's the problem I had with council members, they always wanna get stuff for free from the citizens. Now, we got, we got six thousand citizens in here, and I don't see you giving these citizens that one free event up in here in that Gold Room, give them a free, give them a, we charge them fifty dollars to use the room, we charge them.
I'm not getting anything.
Your organization that you are a part of is getting something from it, you are a member of that organization. So you should not be voting on that. The, talk to the attorney about it, maybe, you know, I mean, as an ethics.
You talk to the attorney about it.
Uh, so, so, so look, point of order.
I'm getting mad at me because.
Mr. Harry, I I I got you, give me one second. So when I have a point of order, we gotta just stop so we can get order. Councilwoman Harry has the floor right now, and so he can continue. Um, you can unmute yourself now, Councilman Harry.
I can't unmute. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to keep somebody from getting ethics charged because I'm telling you, if you are a member of organization and it says that clearly in the Ethics Code, that if you are a member of organization, you cannot vote on this issue. And you are, if you are a member, I don't know, I don't know who's a member of Zion and who's not, but I'm just saying, if you are, you cannot vote on this issue. But I'm just saying no anyway, I just think that it should be fair across the board. If you allow this organization to do it, you gotta allow every church in here to do it. You're not allowed every housing, the housing authority, if they got a group to do it, you gotta give them all the free and we can't afford that because the Gold Room is already in the, in the red. And on in the, and a a a community room is barely, barely breaking even with the staff that we have to pay to keep that place up, so no.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Hairston?
Abstain.
Vice President Ferguson?
Uh, for me, I I don't remember, um, and I don't know why that it it being presented before, but I mean, I feel rushed, um, cause um, and I have some other questions uh or concerns about it, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, um, if stains have it, oh, sorry. I'll say yes, but still, it's one no, four stains, only three yeses, it doesn't pass. Um, uh, Councilwoman Farid, would you be interested in um bringing this back so that people can get their questions answered as it relates to uh whether it be um, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Farid? I don't think I can, did you vote on it?
Yeah, I was, I was the first.
Yeah, yeah, you was first, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, to get people's questions answered as it relates to whether it be ethics or whether it be um just um, looking into it, I I know Councilwoman Jones had a question, uh, but are you interested in in leaving it at a no or did you want to get some questions answered?
Um, yeah, we can certainly bring it back, uh, this is, you know, it's for the kids. That's why I was approached to to bring it forward as an opportunity to um benefit the the city. And Zion has approached us numerous times on different things to try to do things for the city, just as they did like the Easter egg hunt and wanting to participate um in the Seventh Street opening, uh grand, uh grand opening of the park, which unfortunately ended up being a scheduling conflict. But I just, I'm saying that to make it clear because I do not like the implication that because I am a member of this church, I'm trying to get free stuff for the church. I am a council member of the city of Glen Arden, and it is also my mission to bring services to the city and the children of Glen Arden, as evidenced through numerous pieces of legislation that I have passed over the four or brought forward over the four years. This is about providing activities and an opportunity for the children of the city of Glen Arden. The questions that have been asked in terms of uh insurance, et cetera, all of these are valid questions. We can go back and get, you know, that information. If that would be helpful for people in making a decision, most certainly I can go back and and get that information. But again, I resent any implication that this is about the church trying to get something free. The church has enough resources and it has their own spaces where if they wanted to do this activity, they could do that on their own. They are trying to bring these services and these opportunities to the children of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. President, Mr. President, one thing, one thing about procedure. The only person that could bring this consensus back is the four, is the four people that, either abstain or vote a no. So that's who can bring it back, cause it was a formal, almost consensus, so.
Well, not for consensus, Councilman Harry.
You consider the vote?
Uh, not for consensus, I mean, I welcome.
Hold on, let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question. Now, if you had gotten four yeses, would you have told them it's a go?
If I, I'm sorry.
Four yeses on a consensus, would you have told them it's a go, they can go ahead and do it?
Yeah.
No, see, that's what I'm saying, then I was a vote, you can't tell them if they're on the consensus that they can do it. So if you're gonna say they can do it on a consensus, then saying they can't do it on a consensus is the same difference. So I'm just saying, you know, but uh either way, like I said, reach out to the attorney about the 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 uh uh ethics, ethic ethical issue or ethical que- ethical question on that, I'm just trying to keep you from getting in trouble. But, you know, if you wanna get in trouble, that's you. But again, like I said, again, you, a- as a council member, we are council members, we all work for in it for the betterment of the community. But I don't see, I don't, I, if I bring somebody, if I bring an organization, it's not a part of, I'm not voting for it because it isn't right, and you shouldn't do that. That's not what you do, you you have a, invest, your organization have a vested interest in the outcome of that because there's a cost to use the community room, and there's a cost to use the Gold Room. So it's, then they're not, and if they're not paying it, then it's a, it's it's a gift to them. And if they haven't more than enough money, then they shouldn't have no problem renting it like everybody else, fifty dollars is, you know, what's fifty dollars? So, all right, thank you.
All right, and and I appreciate it, Councilman Harry, and I only say that because in in speaking with uh the attorney, um, it's my understanding that even if someone voted yes or no, however they voted for um a piece of legislation, that that person, wherever that vote was, can't actually bring it back. Um, but we can go back and forth, but um, that's what the attorney told me. So that's why, what was the basis for, if we could do that for legislation, then surely you could do that. So that's why, what was the basis for, if we could do that for legislation, then surely we could do that for consensus, but we can, I can.
As I said, time to read parliamentary procedure.
We can get a formal opinion and go from there, cause, you know, I don't want to waste everybody's time going back and forth, but I'm just saying that was my basis for it, so.
Yes, council president, one other thing. I am not on the board of directors of Zion. It is not my church. I am one of thousands, if not tens of thousands of members of. That church. I hold no influence over their decision-making process. So I just want that to be clear as well, because when we talk about ethics, we need to be clear that just because a person is a member of a sorority or. A, a church or a, other vast organization, that does not preclude them from being able to participate in things. These are things where ethical violations are things that are direct benefits to that person.
You, that is not true. You need. At the, the violation is the, being a member in your organization benefiting from your vote. Read the, read the ethics code, please, because you're gonna get yourself in some trouble.
Well, then do what you need to do to get me in trouble.
So, so point of order, because I think we've, we've gone past, like, so councilman Harry, I understand your point. Councilwoman Fareed was just stating that she doesn't hold any type of board influence or things like that. I understand what you're saying, councilman Harry.
Read the code, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, I, I understand what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to keep somebody from getting in trouble. I'm not gonna, I ain't gonna do anything, I ain't gotta do anything.
I understand that. And I appreciate your point, and I also appreciate councilwoman Fareed's point, just stating that, that. You know, she was not part of the board, and didn't make decisions for the church. That's all she was saying. That, that doesn't necessarily negate, you know, whether people want to research the ethics rules. That's, that's fine. So both you guys are saying two different things. Alright. Last two are, uh. For councilwoman Fareed, we'll just close out with yours, because I think councilwoman Jones had multiple things, so we'll. We'll close out with, uh, your topics with candidates for District Five.
Yes, um, I was wondering if we thought it might be a good idea to. Um, host the candidates who are running for District Five, which is the district that we are in, um. For the citizens to come for, you know, to have an opportunity to engage with them and ask them questions and hear what their, um. What their platform is and what they plan to do for the area, and I just wanted to get the council's thought on that, even though I'm a voter. Myself, and maybe voting for these people, I, you know, I just want to bring it forward and see if we think that it would be appropriate for us to do something like that.
Thank you, councilwoman Fareed. I, I do have a question. Have you been in contact with all the candidates? Is it something you've discussed with them of their interest in doing it? Or are you first gauging our interests?
First engaging your interest in doing something like that.
Oh, I think.
It's something, it's something that's done, we, I've seen a few for the county executive. But I haven't seen any, um, specifically for the county council District Five, and that, uh, election is on March fourth. Special, the, the primary for the special election.
Uh, speaking of that, I haven't seen anything for the county executive. If we can share that on our website so that our citizens can be informed, that would be great.
Well, it's, it's from an organization that I support that is hosting this. Uh, county executive forum, one, one that I know of on February seventeenth. But I'm, I'm happy to share that information.
Yeah, I was just saying, if we could put it on like the marquee or things like that, um, but I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I, I think that for the city council, that citizens should be more involved, but even more so, uh, equally, not even more so, but equally involved. And, um, county and state and federal level, so anything we can do to, um, make our citizens aware, I'm all for it. Uh, councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, uh, council president. They have had, uh, two forms, uh, city manager, I mean, not city manager. Uh, county exec forms, they had one at the Pepper Mill, um. Recreation Center, that was a week ago, two weeks ago, no, two weeks ago, on a Saturday from ten to one. And then there was another one this Saturday at Reed Temple from ten to one for the county exec. And then there's another one, oh, no, they've had three. There was one in Laurel last week. So, but then, uh, so they've, they've had three, uh, different, uh, county exec forums that I know of, and they have some coming up. Now, for the District Five, I know they're having, uh, one in Sherrily. And I don't, the, the date escapes me, but I can get that information and send it over to, uh, Monet to put on the marquee for the District Five Council. Uh, there's a, um, forum that's going to be held.
Okay, so yeah, we can get that to Monet, we can put that, that Anna County Exec, um. Formed up too, so that people can know. Any other comments on this topic of discussion?
Council president, uh, so are we, so, so what are we saying? We do want to host one? And we should go for with securing dates and availability, or are we just okay with the ones that are already happening?
Well, let's put it this, are there any council members who are opposed to hosting a forum for District Five candidates?
Hey, who's gonna host this? That's what I would like, who's, I mean, is it like, we're gonna do it, are we gonna reach out to legal women voters that normally handle debates? Who's gonna do it?
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a debate, um, and it would be the city of Glen Arden doing it, which is why.
Okay, so what is, so what is it? They come to just tell us how they feel?
They're coming to share their platforms and take up, uh, have the opportunity to take questions from the audience. The city of Glen Arden residents primarily.
And you're saying they're not gonna speak amongst each other about any other topic or any, or anything that they're doing? So it's not, they're not gonna be debating anything.
No, it's not a debate. It's a candidate forum. I think if it was a debate, we could call it a, a debate.
No, you probably wouldn't, but, um, let me just say, who is hosting it?
For the third time, the city of Glen Arden would be hosting it.
No, because if you need an independent person to host that debate, like the legal woman voters or some other organization outside of this elected body. Because I know some of us are rep, are supporting some of these candidates, and I think it should be no question of. It, this be, be, be impartiality when it comes down to what the support is, so no. If you're not gonna get an independent organization to do it, no.
So it would be a nonpartisan event, all candidates would be invited to attend.
Doesn't matter. It's that, you're gonna, we're gonna host it, we're gonna make questions, we're gonna get a question, I don't care. You don't know who's gonna slip what in there. I think you need to have an independent person stepping outside of the seven council members to give this, give this, uh. Uh, whatever you want to call it. I think it should be an independent source. I don't think we should be involved in the middle of this. You don't know who's gonna win. You know, my thing is that whoever wins represents all of us. I don't think we should do it. I think that we're gonna sit there and put ourselves in a situation. And that's what I, I don't, I don't think is right. I think you need to have an independent source. We should not be hosting nobody's debate or nobody's. My thing is, there's plenty of organizations that will host it for you. Legal Women's Voters is one, some other organizations. You do reach out to NAACP, ask them what they hosted for. They'll reach out to everybody, get in touch with everybody, set the date up and everything else, have the questions and everything else. We can give them a space and let them do it.
Yeah, we also have, uh, can we also have one of our citizens do it? Like, maybe one of the, you know, presidents of HOA or, um.
No, because you need somebody outside of City of Glen Arden. Especially since you gotta get an resident running. You know, have one side of that, when, when they come to, uh, have a, have an event, I mean, they come to this thing. And you have a Glen Arden resident that's gonna, whether you're gonna support the person or not, I don't know who's supporting who, but it doesn't look good.
Any other comments? Well, I guess we could just do it, just, uh. Councilwoman Fareed, are you looking for a formal consensus? Do you just want to do a consensus, or are you?
If we could have a consensus, I just want to know if this is something that we would be interested in hosting, that we would use the goal room for. So that we can begin to, um, obtain availability.
Okay, alright. Alright, so this consensus is for, um. Agreeing to hold, be open to hold, uh, a candidate forum for District Five. Alright, so let's go around again. Councilman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gion.
Yes, with someone being, um, someone from, not the seat of Glen Arden, serving as a moderator.
Okay. Um, councilwoman Jones.
Uh, yes, and I do agree that, uh, when I go back and look at all of the, um, forms that I just been to the last three. Somebody, NAACP did the one at Reed Temple, I can't remember who did the one for Laurel, and the one, um. Uh, the Democratic, um, young Democratic something did it, the one over at Pepper Mill Village. So somebody, uh, independent would have to do, uh, the, the moderation and be the person that, um. Gets all the people together.
So it's a yes with independent?
Yes, yes, with, yes.
Alright, councilman Harry.
Uh, I'm abstaining, because I don't, I don't know who's gonna host it, so.
Okay. Councilmember Hairston.
Yes, with the independent.
Uh, vice president Ferguson.
Yes.
And I'm a yes with the independent as well, so. Since it's passed with, uh, uh, independent, uh, host.
Thank you, council president.
Thank you. Alright, last topic is the follow-up on issues, councilwoman Jones.
Mister Stewart. The, um. Public service monies, where are we with that? I know we were working on that. Where, but where are we with that? Are we still at a, at a impasse with the county on?
I'm sorry, councilwoman Jones, you're going in and out. We can't hear your full sentence.
All of a sudden I'm going in and out. Before I was doing really good.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mister Stewart.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm asking about the public service monies. Where, where are we with that? The, 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 that we were supposed to be, uh, getting from the Woodmore project. We were going to the county. Trying to figure out what happened to our monies, or if we were gonna be able to, uh, recoup those monies.
Oh, um, you're talking about the, um, the fund relating to getting back fund for the. Developments. That's what you're talking about, yes. So that has been on pause for a while, since the last city manager was here. Um, I guess we have to pick up back on that project, um, to see where and how we could get this fund. Back into the city. Um, I will talk with Jordan before he leaves. I think he may have some information on it, so I'll work with him to see what I could get from that.
I would appreciate it.
Yes.
By closing business of next Friday.
Should be able to get that information. I will speak with him tomorrow to see how much I could get from, from that. And then I'll, I'll work on that as well.
Alright. Annexation, where are we? Are we doing anything with the annexation now, or is that on pause too?
President.
Yes.
Uh, the last correspondence was from, uh, Mister Best, and I'll follow up with him to see where we are. Uh, I believe I may have sent it to the council, but now I'll make sure I send an update, um, that in, interest has been piqued. Um, and that they are finally reaching out to negotiate. I don't have an update, uh, as of yet.
Mister President.
Well, I think councilwoman Jones was, was saying something, just one second. I'm sorry, say that again?
It was on annexation.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so Mister Best is saying that they peaked, but then they went, they went silent on it again. So they peaked some interest and then it's silent again, so he wants to know, um, you know, he wants to. I don't know, we just gotta figure out what's what, what's going on, so that's where we are with that. So, I was trying to get him to one of the meetings we had, so we can discuss it with him, but, um, he's saying they haven't really said anything, so. You know, um. I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna do. You may have to, well, you can't enlist no big guns yet because there's an election, so. You can't get in touch with your county council representatives until after that.
So do we, so do we continue to invest money in, uh, uh, an attorney to pursue this?
I don't think he's done anything for us.
Yeah, we haven't.
He hasn't done anything for us. Has he done anything for us?
No.
I think there was a phone call and a letter, and I, uh, that he said he did send out to reach out, but I'll confirm. Uh, but I don't think there's been much else than that.
Okay.
You're, you're far again, Miss Councilwoman Jones. I don't know what it is.
I, I don't either. I really don't. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, um. I noticed that there were some, uh, documents sent over concerning the goal room. It looks like we've gotten everything in order. Uh, do, do we need to, will we be seeing a resolution soon concerning this?
Uh, yes, uh, council president, um, thank you, Miss Jones. Uh, I know we have sent out that information. I think, uh, we just need to confirm. Uh, if you, the council has had an opportunity to review it, um, and to discuss it further. Uh, so that we can get these approved, uh, according to, uh, council's wishes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Chief Bryant. Chief Bryant.
Don't see, oh, there is. Yes.
I have a couple of questions for you also, um. Let's start, okay, I think we, as far as the general orders went, I think the council wanted, uh, I thought I heard that the council wanted to have a. Conversation with you as, so that you can explain, uh, what the changes were, or the, the, the. General makeup of the general orders. Maybe we can get council president to send out a consensus that, so we can, uh, talk to you about, so we can get that taken care of. And I have the res, if, if there's a resolution required to say that the city accepts the general orders. I know that the council really can't do much with the general orders because they're, uh, state of Maryland. Uh, French Georgia's County, uh, laws and regulations that are put forth. So we need to do that. Were you aware of that?
Um, whatever you guys want to do, um, like I stated earlier, um, that it got aligned from the state, but I see what you guys are saying. I don't want you signing off on nothing you don't understand, so whatever y'all want to do, just let me know and I'll be available.
Okay, uh, the security cameras throughout the city hall that were supposed to.
Can I ask councilwoman Jones a question?
Sure.
Councilwoman Jones, when you said general orders, are you talking about the executive orders, or are you talking about something else?
The police general orders that he sent us a resolution for and the thick buying up book of, uh, resolu, uh, orders that, uh. They had went through and.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, got it. I just wanted to get some clarification. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, um, the security cameras indoors for the city hall, where are we with that?
Okay, so, um, we're still going back and forth with this one company. Um, Lieutenant Robinson's working on that, and I think he had, his last conversation was, uh. Um, I, I think he had a conversation with the city manager, and I think we, uh, trying to come to a conclusion on, uh, the company we're gonna use in reference to that. For the best price, because, um, some of the prices are outrageous, so we had to check around.
Okay, so we're gonna get that project done, I guess.
Okay, so we're gonna get that project done, I guess, probably hopefully the end of this quarter?
I hope so.
Okay, now there's cameras for the, around the city, the uh traffic cameras. I thought we ran our last leg with that, and that those would be in by now.
Well, yeah, um to hold up with that was the snow and the weather, because they had to do the grounds and stuff like that. So we've had a meeting with them last week. And the snow kind of uh held us back on that, so we're hoping to be up and running by March.
Okay, and Chief Bryant, were you able to have a um talk with Lynn concerning the security over at the Woodmore Town Center?
Uh, no. Uh, I I reached out to her. I haven't heard back from her yet, so I'll go by it in person.
Okay, and last but not least, uh police cars. I happen to be downstairs. And I saw several police cars sitting out there, like one oh eight, one twenty-one, one twenty-two, one twenty-three. And the two black cars that you and um, the one that you had and the one that Lieutenant Robinson had, when you all got new vehicles. Are we gonna um do something with that surplus of vehicles so that uh?
Uh, right now, uh we don't really have a surplus. We just have like extra, extra vehicles right now, but we're working on that. Um, because we just got two vehicles. Um and then you got um a replacement for the captain vehicle and a replacement for the lieutenant vehicle. Um one of them be um a spare vehicle for me and one to be a spare for the lieutenant. And um the two cars we have now, uh we just got rid of the two twenty, I think the twenty twelve. So we pretty much up in the twenty, the youngest car we have now is the twenty eighteen. So we um, we moving forward with that.
So why would you need, why would you and the lieutenant need a spare?
Um like right now, my new car, I'm having issues with my new vehicle right now, so um soon as global. Um, take that, I'll need a vehicle to drive.
Okay, it's cause I see that as as revenue that we could, uh you know, not sell for a dollar, but I'm sure we could get better looking at um, like I said, one oh eight, that's relatively, I won't say it's new, but it's uh I'm not sure how many miles is on it, because I haven't gotten an updated list of whose car is who and which car is spare and what car is not. I just saw these cars sitting out back. And the two black cars, I'm, I was thinking, once you all got new cars, that those would, you know, go to um be um surplus.
Well, one one of them, one of them go to surplus. Um Lieutenant Robinson, old black car, that go to surplus for the mileage and everything and that, but the gray one um.
I didn't see the gray one. Where's the gray one at?
Uh, the gray one, the gray one's there.
That was Captain Jackson's vehicle. I I didn't see that one.
Yes, I do.
Okay, alright, thank you, Council President. Thank you so much. I hope that these, these issues, these odds and ends can be addressed, so we can move forward. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time and attention.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Alright, uh that is the.
I'm sorry, do we need to do a, take a a vote for a meeting to talk about the general orders? Just kind of keep that, so so that the general orders can be explained to the council. Some of the council wanted explanations.
Okay.
So just, you know, remember that. Thank you.
So can we just schedule some time with the next work session?
I don't know how long it's gonna take the chief to 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 address that issue. I guess maybe we could.
Well, what you can do, what everybody can do is you can look through the general orders, uh like I said, it's five hundred ninety-seven pages or something like that. Um and they'll, each of them have a headline. If you got any questions or concerns about them, just write down your questions, and I should be able to answer them for you.
Okay, it's it's, so I I'll just say this, over the I mean, we've had time to to look at it, but if if council members haven't had time to look at it between now and the next work session, please go through that almost six hundred page document and bring questions to the next work session, so that we can kind of have it um structured as opposed to try to go through each section, which could, would take some time.
Yeah, because um most of them pretty much self-explanatory, um what we'd be doing and so forth. And what's the guidelines and statutes and stuff, they're pretty um general, understandable, so shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, sounds like a plan, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh yeah, then we could bring the resolution to the next uh work session also. And get that taken care of.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's the last item on the agenda.
Mister President, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Has the parking ordinance gone to the mayor for signature? The parking ordinance that was passed?
Oh, yes, yes.
Has it gone to the mayor for signature?
Mr. Simpson or Mr. uh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, um could one of you guys answer that?
I haven't, no.
No, okay, well, that that needs to get to to her.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, uh that could get to her in the morning, that'd be great. And then we can move forward. Alright. If all hearts and minds are cleared, the time is nine thirty-seven. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.